We're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for July ninth, 2025. We're here at three forty of High Street in Hamilton and it's a little after six o'clock. We do have two public hearings this evening, one involving a tax budget 2026 as well as our charter amendments. Local, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Give the quorum.
Still off and offering a prayer. I'm on a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Remind God, thank you for the safe travels and great community gatherings we have had this summer. Thank you for our first responders who continue to do miraculous work as public servants. We do pray for those locally and in Texas who have faced tragedy. Please continue to guide us through the great days as well as through the tragic moments. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we now go to special presentations. You first have our Public Works Director, Dan Arthur, to talk to us about EV and hybrid vehicle purchases.
Yeah. Hi there.
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, citizens of Hamilton. We're going to give you a bunch of updates on our fleet tonight. First part I'm going to cover, which is some vehicles we were able to purchase through a grant program. Got some EV and hybrid vehicles in here. Second half of it, Chris Haynes, I think most of you know him. He's been with the city for almost 27 years now and various roles, but he's the guy that heads up our fleet and does an amazing job. Just really, really changed a lot of things down there. It made us a lot better and more efficient. But he's going to cover the second half of the presentation with some updates there. I think I can read it from here. So the Department of Energy put out a grant program. It was Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Program, and we submitted for that in April of 2023. It was a strange program. There was a lot of, a lot of applications, a lot of, a lot of forms you had to fill out to get into it. Hamilton was eligible for $122,250 through that grant program. It's an EV voucher program where you can get equipment and stuff like that with it. So submitted for it in April of '23 and then found out in mid-March, March thirteenth, that we were approved for the program. You have about two years to use the funds in. And initially, we purchased three EV vehicles through that, spent about $115,000, $116,000 of the $122,250 initially and got three EVs in there to kind of try out those in the system. As you've noticed, we've been putting in the, you know, EV charging stations and so wanted to get some of those in and kind of see how they would do. We have to show the cost savings that we have through the program, so put out an annual report showing how much we've saved or the other vehicles we had. And so we kind of have to track all of those things and then turn in a report every year for that. We received a call from the Department of Energy employee that said that there was additional funds in Butler County that were going unallocated. It was a little over a quarter of a million dollars. It was, well, just under a quarter of a million dollars, $248,000. So we got ahold of the county administrator. They weren't going to go through all the red mural of starting the program that late and weren't going to use the funds. We're willing to write a letter saying that they weren't, that those funds weren't going to be used by them. And so they really partnered with us on this, gave us a handshake and, and sent us the letter that we needed to transfer those funds over. And it was just that easy because we had started up the program. Once we had the letter from them, we were able to transfer another quarter of a million dollars into our account to use for additional vehicles. And with that addition, those additional funds, we purchased seven additional vehicles. They were, we did a mixture of EVs and hybrids this time, so we could still, you know, use some of the EV program, but also some of the vehicles were a little better off with the travel that they do to use hybrids. So we did kind of a mixture on that. And then since they partnered with us and helped us out to get the program started, we were going to gift one of the vehicles to Butler County Engineers Office, so that some of them went back to the county for their help. Next slide. We're just going to kind of go through some of the slides to show you what we were able to purchase. You're going to notice a bit of a motif with this. A lot of the things that we were replacing are pretty darn old. They were early, you know, early 2000s. Most of them Taurus's, some of them Explorers, had a lot of miles on there. Chris did a great job of going into our system that we have and that tracks all that to kind of see the, you know, how much money we're spending on these vehicles, what we're spending in maintenance, as well as how many miles they have on them, and looking, looking which ones were the right ones to replace. So we, are we on the first one there?
The second one.
Okay. So a lot of those, like I said, were Taurus's. We got some Equinoxes, some EVs. Go ahead to the next one. This was Ion Q5. What the guys did, they were trying to, we're trying to get these as fast as we can, but they're also moving fast in the, around here. So we're kind of getting what we can find, what we can get a good deal on. They did an amazing job tracking down the vehicles that we could get and seeing what we have. So not everything is white, but we did get a variety of different vehicles. Go ahead to the next one. We've got another Chevy Equinox. Again, this replaced a Ford Taurus, a 2005 Ford Taurus. We had purchased a bunch of Taurus's and this was, we were able to get rid of some of those, those bad boys. This is a Ford Escape Hybrid that we got. That's, that's been repurposed and got rid of a 2006 Ford Taurus. Go ahead and head to the next one. One thing we wanted to do is also try some hybrids for some of the trips we take. Sometimes people, like, we just actually use this vehicle here to go down, the group of us to Charlotte for the Top 50 Fleet Award. And, and so we want something that can also travel and not have to make as many stops as an EV. We want something you can also get, you know, four to six people in. So we got this Hyundai Santa Fe in, and it actually did a great job on the trip. We got between 31 and 34 miles a gallon. And, you know, it was nice to, nice to have something like that to go with. Next. This is actually another one of the Santa Fe hybrids. This one is the one that we'll be gifting to Butler County Engineers Office for them partnering with us in this program and, and helping us get that extra funded, funds in. And then this is a RAV4 Hybrid that we got. Again, replaced another Taurus, 2006 Taurus. Go ahead. This was another RAV4 Hybrid that was, goes up in engineering, does a lot of running, and they had a 2005 Explorer that this one replaced. So the guys did, like I said, a tremendous job finding these vehicles, getting good deals on them. We knew how much money we had to spend. And then they came up, they're like, hey, we might have just enough money to, to get a Corolla. This wasn't planned initially, but they just had enough funds in the fund to get this Corolla Hybrid in there. So we purchased a Corolla Hybrid and that got rid of another 2005 Explorer. Next slide. This is just kind of a summary table. It's kind of, yeah, I can read parts of that. This is kind of a summary table of everything that we, that we purchased. We spent $366,887, and this will all be refunded through the grant program. So it's 100% refund. We're in the process of submitting the paperwork now to get, to get those, those funds back. Just a general summary here. Overall, we purchased between the three originals and then the new seven, we purchased 10 new vehicles through the grant program. Nine of those were for the city, four of those as EVs, five of those as hybrids, and then one of those hybrids will go to Butler County Engineers Office for partnering with us. Again, we, you know, spent like just $4,000 on the whole amount. Guys did a great job finding the vehicles for us. Any questions on that side of it?
That is a great job. Thank you.
Thanks for discovering this, this grant line. We're getting really good at discovering grant money and using it very wisely.
City does an excellent job funding all of the grants.
Yeah, and it's incredible to go back and say, we replaced vehicles that were in our fleet that were 18 and 20 years old. And, you know, again, high maintenance on those old, old vehicles, parts and things like that, probably not available anymore. So congratulations again, and as other council members said, on using that allocation of funding, going to Butler County and saying, we can use that in that partnership and then granting them one, one new vehicle over to the Engineers Office is a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm assuming you're using those EV chargers that were also through a grant, correct?
Yes, those were also through a grant.
Yeah.
We're using those uptown, the vehicles up here. We have an internal charging station down there that we do inside, too. We're in the process of putting four new units at the natural gas facility right there. Those are just about complete, so.
Yeah, that's great.
That's awesome.
Great.
Then, like I said, Chris is going to cover some general changes and go over some exciting news at the end. I want to give us more.
Appreciate it.
But again, it's something good about those EVs and hybrids. There's a warranty that comes with them now, so we don't have to really touch these vehicles for about the next eight to 10 years on the batteries and so forth. So it makes it a little easier for fleet maintenance because these new EV batteries are going to be something to maintain down the road, but we'll see how, how it goes when we get there. So we want to put a little slideshow together about fleet maintenance in general, some, some mid-year review where we're at now and some, some things we presented to the PUC for the 2024 year. So we'll just go over some, some high level stuff and let you know where we're at on that. So again, the, the fleet department's made up, of course, the street fleet and sewer department with Dan Arthur, Craig Coger, myself, Matt Zeller, and our technicians down there at the, at the garage, eight technicians. We got a shop floor manager, our building service worker, Johnny, does a lot of parts running, takes care of the shop and cleans up, and of course, Karen, as our administrative assistant down there. So 11 people down there that do all this work on, on the, on the fleet of the city. So we use a system called FAST, and we've been with FAST for over 25 years here, and it's our, it's our computerized maintenance software. That's where we get all these numbers from. Everything we do on a vehicle, a piece of equipment, a trailer, the fuel, everything we do goes into this system right here. That's how we're able to pull all this information out, provide any information for any vehicle, any piece of equipment in the city. It's all right there. The mechanics do their time on this system, so we know what, what is charged out, how much the chargeback system is for each vehicle, for each department, and we do our monthly billing out of this system also. So it's a, it's a robust system, and a couple of years ago, we did upgrade it, so it's, it's working even better than we expected. So all of our numbers come out of this, this, this computer system here. So if you look at 2024, we completed about 1,800 work orders on, on vehicles, on about, what, 565 vehicles out there. Did 598 PMs, repaired 44 units from those PMs, did 28 annual safety inspections, which are our bucket trucks, our cranes, those kind of things that get done annually. So you can see in 2025, just for the first half until the end of June, 822 work orders on 429 pieces of equipment and 250 PM service just so far this year. So our fleet availability report, which is something we measure ourselves by, of course, and so for 2024, we had a 96.09% fleet availability against every piece of equipment that's in the city. Now, it, it's broken down into a public safety vehicles available 24 hours a day. So that's 24 hours that vehicles accounted for, a, 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 a street department vehicle is accountable for eight hours a day. So you add all those hours up, and this is how you come up with your availability, that's tracked by downtime or uptime. To 2024, how many tires we issued? We issued 138 tires. And again, this is all in that FAST system, and it costs about $73,000. So that's police tires, that's backhoe tires, that's truck tires, all those tires that we've used throughout the, throughout the year on all these vehicles. So last year was about 138 tires at that cost. Fuel usage. So we track fuel usage. And again, diesel fuel, 64,000 gallons at, at that cost, unleaded fuel, 165,000 gallons, at about half a million dollars in cost of that, plus our CNG cost. So just the fuel usage in 2024 is about $754,000. And again, we track all this for every vehicle. We know by the, by the, the assets getting their fuel, we know what mileage they have because they have to put their mileage in, in turn, and we know when to do our oil changes. So that's how those are set up that way. So with all, all the work that's been done, the parts that we keep in stock normally, you know, brake rotors, windshield wipers, lights, those kinds of things, we always keep in the garage, about $83,000 worth of stuff, other stuff that we had to order. Again, that's why we got rid of some of these 2005, 6, 7 Taurus's and, and Explorers, $549,000 worth of parts that we used just last year. Okay. Something we did over the past year and a half is upgraded some to our telematics system. We got about 255 units in the, in the city right now that has telematics on us. We could see what's going on with the vehicles. We can see their locations. And again, those who've monitored the salt trucks this year, there's cameras in the salt trucks that we can see what's going on on the, at that, for the road conditions as we're out there plowing. So, and it's actually helped us out on a few things with some, some claims that were adjudicated because of the camera system. So again, there's alerts set up that we can see, a check engine light, low batteries, crash alerts, those kind of things. So this is a, this is a very good system that we, we've had for about a year and a half now. So all this stuff in FAST and all this stuff that we, we do our KPIs on, we, we've submitted for the last three years for the government fleet, leading fleet award. And this was just a couple of weeks ago when, when we went down to Charlotte, North Carolina, again, receiving a Top 50 Fleet Award. You can see Daniel, Adam, one of our mechanics down there, myself and Craig Coger there at the, at the ceremony, receiving the, the certificate for the leading fleet. And of course, there it is. We got, again, three consecutive years, '23, '24, and '25. Pretty proud of that. And, you know, we've been in ASC Blue Silvec shop for five years. We do have four technicians that are completely EVC certified, whether apparatus or, or medic. Three of our technicians are world-class technicians. We did have Carl retire last year. And again, leading fleet for three consecutive years, '23, '24, and '25. So, so that my hand, my hand goes off to the guys down there at the garage doing all the work, the amount of hours they put in, the outfits of the vehicles that we do on the police cars, the, the medics and so forth. They're high class and I wouldn't have it any other way. But if you had any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
I think world-class says a lot of it, you know?
Yeah.
Wow. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Chris, for a city our size, and you'd calibrate that through the United States and all the different fleets and all of the different vehicles that are serviced by those fleet departments, similar to what, what you do here in Hamilton. That's incredible, three years in a row and being the top 50. Congratulations.
Yes, it's, it's a good job from the guys down there for the recognition they get too. So, yeah, we're pretty proud of it. You know, and there's only two, two cities in Ohio, Dublin and us this year. It was just us last year. So, you know, we compete against Dublin pretty well, so we'll take it.
Go ahead.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Please, please.
Hey, thanks for the in-depth look at the costs and all that. I think that's very important. You guys continue to do a great job. Very pleased with it and happy you're a big part of the team.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. This will be a brief, I'll speed through it, presentation, some of the same material that was presented at the public meeting on June 24. Won't spend any time on this, but the basic purpose and need, you've seen this probably a half dozen times, is to improve traffic, to improve safety, emergency response times, promote economic development. This is what it really boils down to, the whole project, a bridge over the great Miami River to replace Black Street, convert Black Street then into a pedestrian bridge, a new railroad overpass, similar to South Hamilton Crossing, and then connections between all of those, North B Street and State Route 129. These are some of the studies that have occurred over the last few years. Won't go into these in detail, but first part, the transportation, looks at what's the best route. Best route for traffic isn't always the best route because it might impact things that are important to the city, to the neighborhood. It might impact cultural resources or come across hazardous materials. We've had a number of meetings, stakeholder meetings, meetings more than I can count with the neighborhood and with individuals, and then the three public meetings. There is a virtual open house going on right now through August 8th, so anybody that wasn't able to attend the meeting can see a video that's got basically the same material and can weigh in on what they think about the project. These are the numerous routes. We call them 18. There's probably dozens of them if you combine them in different ways, but these are, this is where we started. The gray ones are all of those that we looked at to some level of detail, made those earlier matrix. The colored ones are what we boiled it down to after the feasibility study, and then we'll talk about which ones were selected. The two river crossings that we shortlisted, one at Northwest Washington, the one that was probably the leading contender when we started this process. If you looked at North Hamilton Crossing, it's more of a bypass. That's the route that would have been selected. The southern one is directly opposite Ray, and we have selected that as the preferred or as the recommended preferred alternative. This is kind of what I'd look at. You looked at this a few weeks ago when we were talking about applying for a grant for those, that roundabout, the intersection modification at Ray and Gordon. Central section's what most of the decision revolved around because it impacted more businesses, homes and such. These are the four that were studied in more detail. A couple of these actually came out of that public input process, like the, the Vine Street was tweaked and the, the one we refer to is the Joe Nuxall option in orange was actually added based on public input. This is the recommended central section. We call it the Vine Street Option. It's really more of a Heaton Street option. It follows Heaton Street from Miami basically over to about Seventh, and then it goes up to Vine Street. It's close to the old Vine Street Crossing and where the railroad overpass will be. The east section was pretty easy to sort out, and that's, this has been that way for a while. Goes through county property. I won't spend any time on it. This is what the overall looks at absent the roundabouts at Northwest Washington, West Elkton, which are funded through construction. Those were breakout projects, so they weren't really covered in the public meeting. The purpose of the last public meeting was to cover the environmental necessary to get approval for this. That was broken out and it's, it's an approved project already. Likewise, if we get the funding, which I think we will from OKI for the roundabout at Ray and the Gordon intersection, that could be broken out of this ahead of time as well. You can see, I, I really like what the consultants did with the sections. If you go on the website, they did a very good visual of what it would look like and that it's a boulevard and not the highway that many people feared it would be early on. If you go back to that one for just a second. The project will be broken out. I see it probably being broken out into seven, seven separate projects, one being the roundabouts at Northwest Washington, the next one being the roundabout at Ray and Gordon. Then the timing is really grant dependent, but probably will just continue west to east with the river crossing being the next one. The central section will be broken up, I would expect, into the overpass, which would go from 127 to Heaton, where it touches down and can connect back into Heaton as it exists today. Then picking that up, taking that over to Route 4. Between Route 4 and 129, I see being one section, even though that's considered central, part central section, part east section. Reason for that is we don't want to do a connection between Fair and Route 4 and pull a bunch of traffic onto Fair. We really only want to do that segment if we get all the way over to 129 so that we can divert traffic around Fair. We don't want to add traffic to Fair where the schools are located. And then the roundabout at Princeton and Hampshire, improvements on Hampshire, that could be broken out perhaps in advance of some of those western sections. That's an easy breakout project. This is the timing. As I said, this is the recommended preferred alternative. Next year, this should be blessed by ODOT. There's a little more studies yet to do. We'll conclude the virtual open house, additional public comments. There'll be another actual hearing for people to weigh in. The last one was just an open house and people could ask questions to individuals at the boards. This will be one final opportunity for people to come and say their piece in front of a mic, and then we expect hopefully approval by ODOT spring, summer of next year. With that, I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions about it while I'm here.
Questions?
Mayor.
Please.
I don't have any questions, but you guys have done a great job. I see it circulating a lot on Facebook, which we all know is the most important thing that you please, but I think the word's getting out there, so you're doing a great job with that.
Thank you. I will say, the, the board is outside. There's a nice fact sheet, if anyone hasn't seen it. These are outside as well, as well as public comment forums. They're a good source, and the consultant has spread some of the same things around town.
The open house has stopped some rumors and truly educated a lot of people. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I am excited about this, Alan, and I do appreciate the efforts in getting into the north end and going over this in great detail. Moving this project forward is very important as it will have a great impact on our neighborhood revitalization. I think that this will make sure that this, that our neighborhoods revitalize very quickly. I think it's going to fast-forward it. Very excited about it as that is a neighborhood that absolutely needs, needs a, needs a charge. So I appreciate the, being very open and detailed about it and appreciate the fact that we're moving forward.
Thank you. Certainly the intent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to speak may comment, may do, may speak during this part of the agenda or when their item comes up for vote on council floor, they've got a right to speak then if they wish to. All individuals who intend to address City Council require to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Our first speaker is Jim LaMann.
Good evening, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Council, hey, um, okay, well, I, I don't have, I don't have, been on Thursday, Thursday, a couple weeks ago. There's some old piles they fixed and they're all messed up again on Third and, right on Third and High going north. Real bad piles. I mean, you, everybody been there? Everybody been there? He is.
Okay.
And then also, um, on Dana, come from, is it coming from G Street, turn right to Dana, you know, from, from, come, come from, um, Prada Street, turn on G Street and Third Street, I think it's Dana or whatever, turn right there. The big pile right there, I've been, I've been there for, for months. The same city, the city, I mean, specking roads at all, seemed like.
Any other locations you got, Jim?
Huh?
Any other locations do you have? Other locations?
I told you, I said Dana, Dana and G Street, right there, turn G Street, from G Street to Dana. to Dana.
Well, I've noticed myself, some of the potholes are getting filled. I mean, I suppose two of them are there.
The city, the city, the guy who ran inspection, he doesn't do a very good job at all. I could find more than he does.
Mr. Mayor. Well, hold on a minute, Jim. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Eric. Jim, I, I think they're doing a great job, and I think that you telling us some locations is a good thing, that these folks are working five days a week, doing a really, really good job. It's a difficult job.
But I can work for, I can work for them. If I get a job, I can find them, as much as you can, you know?
Well, Jim, I, I think you're doing a good job as a volunteer helping us, okay? Mr. Vice Mayor Pullman, do you want to make some comments?
I just want to make a comment again, Jim. Like I was telling you, appreciate you telling me this, but I actually was educating a couple of neighbors in my neighborhood about how to use the app, and the app does work, and so we actually put one in for a large pothole we have out where I live, and it was fixed within about four days. And it's not just because I'm vice mayor, it's because I use the system, and it was really nice how they came back and verified the emails, even had a little survey afterwards. So it might be worth trying to learn the app and point them out. It would help the city, puts it on a list. I think they do a great job on the ones that they get through the 311. Are there going to be some mistakes every once in a while? I'm sure they miss one or two, but I think all in all, it's working good. My neighbors were kind of, a couple of my neighbors that were out there, you know, they usually run up and tell me about it, and I said, "Come here, I'll show you, I'll show you what I'm doing." And, you know, I showed them the app the other day, and I said, "It's really simple. Download it." And it is, it's very simple. I think it's only the second time I used it, so I was trying to demonstrate, and it was pretty easy to demonstrate even after I haven't used it that much. So if that's something that you need help downloading on your phone too, we can show you how to use it maybe. I think somebody here could. So just a thought.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Mayor.
Good idea.
Have a good night.
Mr. Mayor.
Jim happens to be in luck today because Dan Arthur is in the audience, and I saw him taking down some notes there, so Jim, if you don't run off...
I gave you my card.
Perfect. Dan will make sure we get those, the address for those couple potholes. And I also want to commend our team because I know there was a pothole that I, I saw on Pershing Avenue, westbound at Nealon Boulevard, and again, within a couple of days, they got it filled. I just came over it this evening and, and it looks great, so thank you, Dan, to the team.
Good job on the system, so.
Yeah, but the app is actually very helpful. It puts it right in the system, it goes in the city works, and they have to complete the work before they can start. Last week, we made sure we got the freight route. Gave that to the guys, said, "Hey, hit this really hard. A lot of people are going to be walking down the streets."
Appreciate you helping, Mr. Lohman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, too. Okay, Vanessa Cummings. Good evening.
You all should have received an email letter from Payne Chapel AME Church. I'm Reverend Vanessa Cummings, the pastor of Payne Chapel AME Church, which is the oldest, we believe, the oldest historically black congregation in Butler County. And we are celebrating our 185th church anniversary. So I wanted to come and formally invite all of council, if you're available, on Sunday, August 24th, that afternoon at 3:30, to come celebrate with us. We're going to have a grand celebration, and 185 years is a major celebration. So we also have flyers available, and I think we may have, I don't know if we emailed the flyer to you, but I do have a extra flyer if you all would like to have this for you. So I wanted to share that with all of you and with the community. And the second thing I wanted to share is Payne Chapel started hosting civics meetings in February, and they're held the fourth Monday of every month. And they're nonpartisan meetings that educate people on what's going on in the community, what's going on at the state level and the federal level, how it can affect our communities, how it can affect our families, and just educating people to understand how to become engaged in what's going on politically and to become more socially active in the community, and we're working on ways to get more voters engaged as well. So we have these meetings, the fourth Monday of every month at Payne Chapel at 6:00 PM, and it's sponsored by our Social Action Committee. So I do have some flyers. The next one is on July 28th, and it's got the agenda and all the information. The topics of that one will include what's going on with the Ohio budget and the federal budget that was just passed, and how it may impact our families and communities, and also how to engage the unengaged. So it's just our way of trying to get more people in the community involved and having it. We're calling them civics meetings because a lot of people don't understand what's going on, don't understand how to be engaged, don't understand things like gerrymandering and voting districts and representatives and how people are elected. So it's to educate people, and education becomes power. So we're inviting everyone in the community to attend. We have people coming from Hamilton as well as from Oxford to participate, and we have people from Middletown as well. So it's open to anybody and everybody, not just Butler County. So I've got some of these flyers. I can leave some of these here for you as well if you'd like that.
Please do.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you for those two great announcements.
You're welcome, and thank you all very much. I'm going to head to church for another meeting, but it's good to be back and see y'all. It's been a while.
Good to see you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want these? Thank you.
That takes care of our Audience of Citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that covers all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and we're going to go into the Committee of the Whole, which allows council to ask questions, provide direction, hear some reports. The motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the Committee of the Whole take place.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, Second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at approximately 6:37. Okay. Are you leading us, I guess, in this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our first presentation will be, will be made by our Executive Director of Neighborhood Services, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, Council and residents of Hamilton. Planning is bringing one agenda item tonight for your review. It's for 3406 Port Union Road, and it's a conditional use application from Sunbelt Rentals. And they requested a conditional use to allow other vehicle and equipment rental and exterior storage and parking of contractor supplies as an accessory use. And this needed, they are requesting eight variances, and ultimately, Planning Commission reviewed this and is recommending approval. That's how it's coming to you. And I wanted to show this aerial because it kind of gives a little bit of context for why we'll both either find, for why there were so many variance requests. This is a heavy industrial zoned area, but the, and it's a, and so the building's in industrial use, it's very much set back from the street. It's not visible from the street, but our conditional use regulations for vehicle sales and, and outdoor storage and things like that are applicable not just in a place like this, but also on a, on a street like Route Four. So it's, they're written, it's assuming that there's, that it's going to be a high visible property that's going to need a landscape buffer in the front and needs to abide by our commercial design standards. Well, that's not really what you're seeing here. This is a unique situation where this is not going to be like a commercial retail user. This is a big operation that I am not even really clear how much going to direct retail traffic happens here, but as you can see, there's really not any visibility, there's not even any ability to do landscaping that would be visible from the street. So you can see four of the variances are landscaping related, one for commercial design standards. It's an existing industrial building, and they requested a variance for dumpster enclosure material because all the dumps, the dumpsters will be in the rear of the building, the parking surface material. I wish I could show you a video that they showed us at the, at Planning Commission, but I don't have it, easy access to it. But the, it's actually a pretty sturdy, kind of a new material that's somewhere in between regular asphalt and gravel, so it really doesn't move at all. But more importantly, it's in the green air, like the green box in the rear, so it's not visible, and people aren't driving off, on and off from it either. So, and then finally, because it's not a retail space, they're, they don't have a ton of parking for customers, and they're asking for a variance for that as well. So it looks on its, on its face like a lot of variances, but it's just kind of a unique operation and unique part of town. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, then next up will be two presentations by our city clerk, Daniel Tiedemann. All right. Well, Mayor, members of council, members of the public, I've got two short presentations on our caucus agenda for this evening. The first one is for a liquor permit transfer for the Stumps that's located on 681 Clinton Avenue. This is a D1, D2, D3, and D3A liquor permit, which is for beer, wine, and liquor sales to be consumed on premises. And a D3A is, would allow sales till about 2:00 in the morning. Our, our building, fire, and health departments reviewed this liquor permit, and they have no objections. It's staff's recommendation that we do not object to this liquor permit, and with your motion tonight, we will then send that notice to the state that we do not object, we do not request a hearing. Do we have any questions on this side?
Not a question. A D3A is till 2:00 in the morning?
I believe so, yes.
Did not know that. Huh. Okay. All right. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Is, is, is that typical, I guess, the 2:00 AM in a neighborhood setting? Is, I mean, I've often wondered that. We, in years past, we've had a lot of neighborhood bars that 2:00 AM, and you have houses surrounding it. Is that pretty standard?
I wouldn't know whether or not it is standard, but our, our departments, they have clear lines of what they can object and what they can't object to. So fire and building can object, object to clear safety issues or, or if permits are needed or outdated, if inspections are needed from health. That is where they can file those objections, but when it comes to the time in which they're operating, I'm not sure if they can object to that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Please.
What's the hours now?
I looked that up, actually. I think it's open till 11:00 PM most nights, every night except for Saturday and Sunday until 2:30.
And with something like this, do we have hearings for people that live around there to be able to voice their concerns before we do it? Guess I should be looking at you.
Mr. Mayor, do you, do you want me to comment?
The whole D3A thing, the D3A you said was, that's package sales, right?
Right.
For consumption on premises.
On premises.
Yes.
I thought D3A you said was a package sales. Well, it's not. Okay. I'm sorry, Letitia, were you going to comment?
I, I didn't know if Councilmember Fear was, had a question, a legal question that you wanted me to answer regarding that.
Well, would this be something that you'd have hearings on for people that live in the neighborhood? It's being increased till 2:00?
No, it's, it's a, it's what's already been there.
Oh, okay, that's what I asked.
Yes, it's, it's a transfer from one permit to another.
Never mind.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. And then next up for item number three is what, 1079 Millville Avenue. This is the former Tailgaters. This is the D5 and D6 liquor permit transfer. So D5 and D6, this is specifically for beer and liquor sales to, for consumption on premises and also package sales for consumption off premises. And D6 specifically for Sunday sales. Our departments have no objections to this liquor permit transfer. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
I, I have a lot of objection to this particular bar, to be honest with you, and I, I have nothing against Nikki and Brad that own, that are buying this. I think they're outstanding owners, but this bar has a bad history. I've actually lived it for 20-something years, having a business by it. I've also taken many calls from people, actually Mr. Gibson, who lived right next door to, as you see, directly right next door there. He passed away here a few months ago, but I know he has played a role hell with this bar for years, and the damage he has to his trucks. I think City Manager can verify, as he was a police chief, that we had numerous calls, fights, and I had quite a bit of damage at my business there. It's the only time it's ever been broke into was from a major bar fight out there in 2004. It just has a bad, a bad area, it, it just has a bad history. And now I look online, and this bar is open till 2:30 every morning, every day, except for Sunday, it's open till 2:00 AM. And I cannot believe that we, as a city, will sit there and look at this thing and saying that we're going to let a bar sit there right next to a house which is 20 feet away, and that's had a problem with this, that we don't control the hours. We need to do something a little bit different. I know the state's not going to really care about that, they're going to pass, take it through anyway, but I, I fought for this neighborhood for the last 20-something years. I came to council, I think some of the people that were on council remember me having a special meeting here, and we came and fought against this for all the problems that we had, there are noise complaints. There is a picture that I sent Daniel, and if you look, there is a one, I sent this to Daniel today. Let me see.
I'll pull it up.
You'll get it.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate you pulling this up. And for the record, there is no car made that has four wheels in front, so that's a, that's a great Google picture. But if you look over, that they have a one-car garage tent, and that's where they stand out, smoke and drink outside. It gets the noise level. If you could actually go through Google Map or even walk that street, you walk from there to Mr. Gibson's house, it's less than probably 18, 19 feet, and he's had to listen to that the whole time. I could tell you a whole bunch of stories that I heard from that neighborhood, but we don't have time to listen to that, but I just cannot see how we're going to let this thing stay open. I, I want that, I think they will manage this bar, I think they're good people. I worry about pool tables being in the bar, I think that causes a lot of problems, and that's a known history for that. I don't see 2:30 in the morning in the neighborhood. Stumps doesn't do that. Mr. City Manager, Stumps really does not have any history of police calls, do they? Of anything, we've had shootings here and everything else at Tailgaters, so can you elaborate on that?
I do know that Stumps does have a history going back quite a ways of, of being open till 2:30. I can't disclose exactly how I know that. But, no, they have no history of, of calls or concerning activity down there. It's, it's been a pretty well-run neighborhood establishment. The, the premise on Millville Avenue, former Tailgaters, has a long history, very concerning history, and...
It's quite long from what I remember, the spreadsheet I saw.
It is, it is, and, you know, we have worked with, we attempted to work with the prior owners and took a lot of enforcement action to curtail those activities, and since there has been a change in management over the past couple of months, I can say that we've had no calls, no issues there. I, I do believe that the, the new owners and new operators are sincere and genuine and, and, and their assurances that they will run a well-managed place and we won't have problems there. There's obviously no guarantees of that. We are, I've communicated to them very clearly that it is a place that we are going to continue to monitor and keep close tabs on. So I, I do have concerns, and we will continue to monitor it, but my concern is that this is, this is going to continue to operate as a bar because the activity that's, that has occurred there is probably not significant enough. has occurred there is probably not significant enough to revoke the liquor license there. But it really is going to come down to who's managing it, who's operating it, and I think the current applicant is probably the best hope for the neighborhood at this point. As far as the hours go, I, I know the license, or I know that, that advertisement online says 2:30, but they have been closing at midnight. And we have been monitoring that, so they, they, that was one of the assurances they gave us, and they have abided by that thus far.
Thank you.
Well, there are two neighborhood bars, and we hope that the new permit holders handle it the right way, because if they don't, I know some of us were on council when the folks in the Tailgaters area came to council and we heard about the noise, we heard about firearms, we heard about everything. We listened, public safety listened, and I believe that it, it worked well. And with the new owners, I mean, we hope that it works even better. So, it's kind of, the new owners, if they don't do their job right, then there will be hearings and, and we'll take positions on renewals of liquor permits.
And I do believe that they are a better fit for that than anybody has been in a long time, so, and I'm hoping, the, the only doubt that I have on this is that when you have multiple bars and stores, you're not the one that's there all the time. So, you have to rely on your help and stuff, so hopefully their help and everything does exactly as they're told, so, and help this neighborhood out a lot, so, but I hope we monitor this close.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lauer?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Scormeese and his efforts in the, with the police force and working with the state, liquor control, in removing a problem from that neighborhood as it became a problem that got worse and worse every week. However, I have been with Nikki quite, and Brad, quite a few times. At this establishment, the crowd is much less, the numbers are, there's not the volume that was going on, the crowd is different. And I have not, I, I do not know of her being open past 12:30. I don't know, she has on her website here that says till 12:30. I, I'm confident in Nikki and Brad and how they've operated other establishments in town and how they have avoided letting some, some undesirables that came from other places in. That's how I've seen it, but I'm glad that they are a part of this community. I believe that they'll help that neighborhood get a little better. So, I'm confident with those two, and I think you are too, Eric.
Oh, I think I am. I think they're the, they're the fit for it. I just, I have bad memories of that place.
I'm sure.
And it's cost me a lot of money, so it's a, a damage. And I just hope that they're respectful, and I think they will be, and I just, I wish it the best of luck, but I'm, I'm still sitting here cautious, okay? So, appreciate it.
Let's see what they do. Any other comments? Good conversation. Now, accept the motion. That's the committee, the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:54. Now, accept the motion, it's a regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
By Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call, vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, regular meeting is reconvened at 6:55. Now, accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council received their reports of the consent agenda and concur on their recommendations.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:55. Now go into the public hearings. Now, accept the motion, it's a regular meeting, be recessed, and a public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:56. First public hearing.
A public hearing regarding adopting the tax budget for the city of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year 2026.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving our tax budget for 2026? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this hearing involving our tax budget for 2026? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:56. Let me now go into the next public hearing.
A public hearing regarding proposed amendment to Article 10 of the city charter, Department of Human Resources, to add new section 10.01 and to amend sections 10.01 through 10.03, 10.05 through 10.07, and 10.09 to 10.12.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving these proposed amendments to our charter? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amendments to our city charter? And for the record, nobody signed the public speaking book for the very first hearing, and nobody signed the one for the city charter. Hearing nothing, is anybody on council wish to make a statement or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:57. Now, accept the motion, it's a regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call, vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Adopted at 6:58. We now go into council actions that pertain to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none. That mo, that voice vote, motion is carried at 6:58. We now go to pending legislation, agenda, item number six, second reading of an ordinance involving our process of certification of legislation through the Butler County Recorder's Office.
An ordinance amending section 167.08 Certification of Legislation Regarding Streets of Chapter 167 Public Records of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to clarifying the process for certification of legislation through the Butler County Recorder's Office, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
By Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number seven, which is the second reading of an ordinance involving health department license, permit, program fees.
An ordinance amending section 1733.01 Fees and Charges of Section 1733 Fees and Charges of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license, permit, program fees for retail food establishments, food service operations, vending operations, public swimming pools, body art services, and sewage treatment systems, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
By Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Questions, comments, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance involving restricted parking places and special places for parking for the handicapped.
An ordinance amending various traffic schedules of the traffic code as established by ordinance number OR 5264 in 1951 by establishing restricted parking places and special places for parking for the handicapped and repealing certain other traffic regulations, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
The new legislation, agenda item number nine, which is two readings of an emergency ordinance involving our charter amendments.
An emergency ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, of a proposed amendment of Article 10 of the city charter, Department of Human Resources, to add new section 10.01 and to amend sections 10.01 through 10.03, 10.05 through 10.07, and 10.09 through 10.12 to clarify the functions of the department, vest appointment authority for the civil service commission solely with city council, align the appointment of the human resources director with the process used for other department heads, ensure that civil service commissioner appointments are nonpartisan, update job titles and communication methods, and modernize civil service provisions relating to eligibility lists, appointments, promotions, and staffing as set forth in full in this emergency ordinance, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call, vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, of a proposed amendment to Article 10 of the city charter, Department of Human Resources, to add a new section 10.01 and amend sections 10.01 through 10.03, 10.05 through 10.07, and 10.09 through 10.12 to clarify the functions of the department, vest appointment authority for the civil service commission solely with city council, align the appointment of the human resources director with the process used for other department heads, ensure that the civil service commissioner appointments are nonpartisan, update job titles and communication methods, and modernize civil service provisions relating to eligibility lists, appointments, promotions, and staffing as set forth in full in this emergency ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
By Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 10, two reads of emergency ordinance involving in the agreement involving Southwest Ohio Quality Agency, Air Quality Agency.
An emergency ordinance adopting certain local air pollution control regulations consistent with the Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, relative to air quality management within the city of Hamilton, Ohio, first of two readings.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that, that, make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Roll call, vote.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Go to the second reading, please, of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance adopting certain local air pollution control regulations consistent with the Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, relative to air quality management within the city of Hamilton, Ohio, second reading.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion, hearing none, roll call?
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Now, we have two readings of emergency ordinance, amending a particular ordinance to correct an error.
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number OR 2025-5-26 to correct typographical error in exhibit number one by including budget number six and budget number seven, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call, vote on that motion.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance involving a lease agreement with Community First Solutions.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a first amendment to a lease agreement with Community First Solutions for office space at the Community First Research Center located at 230 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, Community First Solutions, lesser, city of Hamilton, less E, first reading.
Mayor? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We go to agenda item number 13.
Thank you, I'm not doing this list.
And that's a resolution involving our tax budget for 2026.
A resolution adopting the tax budget for the city of Hamilton, Ohio, for the fiscal year 2026.
Now, I'll say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Thank you, I'm not going down the list.
And that's a resolution involving our tax budget for 2026.
A resolution adopting the tax budget for the city of Hamilton, Ohio, for the fiscal year 2026.
Now I'll say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nabb, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay. Audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge to all our staff that are here tonight and our citizens at home, what an amazing weekend we had around town, the July 4th holiday, from the parade to the concerts to the fireworks. It was an amazing, not just night on July 4th, but an amazing weekend. The number of volunteers, the number of ordinary citizens and all our departments and staff that pulled together to make this such a wonderful weekend celebration from our streets department, resident services, Rivers Edge staff, particularly our public safety departments and police and fire departments. Despite the amazing weekend that it was and the great celebrations, there was a touch of tragedy on Saturday when a kayaker out on the river suffered medical emergency. The kayak that she was in was, became entangled in the low-level dam down at Loder Park. But I want to commend our fire department that responded, our water rescue teams who were out there. I've talked to people who were at the scene and seen some of the videos and pictures from the rescue and their efforts, their training, their equipment, and the courage of the personnel was just truly amazing, and commend them for their efforts in giving a best possible chance that, for this individual that unfortunately did succumb to her injuries, but nevertheless, their efforts were commendable. Thank you.
Audience of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
If I can back up for a minute, because you were moving pretty quick through this agenda. So, questions on the charter review?
Yes.
How is that going to be advertised to citizens so that they know how we're voting on that?
Great question.
So, we are working on some information, and Brandon Sarver, as part of our strategy piece, is working on a comprehensive informational release about that, about the information and where people can find all the language on it and understand some of the history with that, so we'll be providing that here in the coming weeks.
So, could we possibly have Brandon do a special presentation at one of the meetings? Because a lot of people watch TV Hamilton and just to get an idea.
Absolutely.
Pay for it to go to ballot and not pass.
Well, I think it's important that people understand, you know, all the thought that went into this and all the changes that have occurred, not just here in the city, but in the region relative to civil service and how this will maintain the independence of our civil service commission and keep that valuable resource, but also, you know, create some updates to the system that are past needed, so, yes, I think it's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Now we take this time to report on committees that we're on, and what is, this is not really a report, but just a comment on the TID, which is, Alan is now a board member with me on there, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and they have taken a lot of interest in this project for North Hamilton Crossing. I think they still need to be commended. They, at every meeting, we talk about it, and it's a, it's very important to them, and it's very important to Hamilton, and I really like their progress on there. They're really pushing. I know people want it done quick, but it does take time to get it done, so. The other one is the SELF Committee, which stands for supports and encourages low-income families. That's another great committee I'm on, and tomorrow's our meeting, and I guess I can say this now, it's a sad day, but Jeff Diver, who's the director, is retiring, stepping down as director. He's going to enjoy retirement, and he has done such a fantastic job with this organization. But on the good side of it is, we have a really talented young lady, Sarah Starr, who's going to take it over, and she's, she will, she definitely is very sharp, and I think she follows Jeff very well. I think she'll do a great job. We are going to miss Jeff. I know Pat was on the board for, I don't know how many years you were actually on, but it is, it's a fulfilling board to be on. Every time we go there, they do so many great things, so just, if you see Jeff Diver and you know him, say congratulations, tell him he enjoys retirement, and if you see Sarah, then congratulate her too, and I'm very sure she'll do a great job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
First of all, I'd like to talk about Master Harris from CICA. They are having their annual cleanup this weekend, and they are in need of volunteers. It starts at 8:00 a.m. on Bailey Square on Second Street. Any volunteers are more than welcome, and we'd love to have you. Second, Daniel, if you could pull that picture up, as every community has some of the fights battles with cancer, I want to reach out to a young lady, Becky Palmer, formerly Becky Palmer, Becky Reisenberg, who is in quite a battle with cancer. That's just a few of the girls. In 1990, that group of girls and a bunch of us went on spring break together, and I just noticed, you know, Hamilton's very special as far as its relationships that are grown in this town, and they seem to be lifelong relationships. Unfortunately, they are circling around Becky, who is fighting her bout, continues to fight her battle with cancer, and those girls are great examples of what people, what true people from Hamilton are all about. These girls have been together, and they don't, they meet every month at least, they're always out together, and they've been out together since 1990, and I just think that says something about our citizens, and I just want to shout out to Becky that she continues to fight her battle with cancer. She's, she was diagnosed in 2021, and I wish her all the strength, and I appreciate all the girls that continue to support her. What a great group of women and what they do for each other, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just wanted to say that last night at the Cincinnati Reds game, Hamilton was well represented with about 100 people. Seventeen Strong sponsored the event. We had great tickets, great fun, and we were, I would say, about five rows from the top of the stadium, so we had a bird's eye view, but the game was fun to watch, but I would say, don't let your guard down. The fan cam found me up there in the top. I was behaving, but it was a fun night, and it was, people throughout, it wasn't the kiss cam stuff.
Two beers in the end.
Yeah. It was a great time, and just a lot of citizens, two school buses full of us, and a lot of automobiles that went down, so it was a great time, and I think, again, Seventeen Strong represented the city well last night.
Did they win?
No, they did not win.
Okay, okay. I'm going, I'm going Friday night, so I didn't hear how they did.
It was fun, but it was a great night.
Anyone else? I'm going to say some kind of rapid-fire things if I could. As city manager said, our fire department really almost performed a miracle and created some hope, and they're professional, they're well-trained, and they're, they make us all proud. The July 4th parade, 1,400 participants were in that parade. It was over a mile long, took about almost an hour and a half, but everybody had fun, and when the parade goes down Dayton Lane, there's a lot of great stuff going on there, and when that parade goes from the underpass up, it's incredible for our veterans, it's incredible for our young people. It's, it really, really is a traditional July 4th. Channel 19 was in Hamilton all day long, from True West Coffee to Veterans Park, to talk to Mark Menery of the Fire Department, and he actually was on national TV through Fox. He had 160 channels. He took, he did, he did a great job, but then Channel 19 was all over the parade, and